Very good. Okay, everybody in Christopher?
Yep.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. Good evening. I am calling this public hearing to order at 6:00 PM in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC. One thirty-one, section forty in the Boston Wetlands ordinance, Boston City Code ordinances, chapter seven dash one point four, the Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing this evening on September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearing will be followed by our regular meeting. In accordance with chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two, we are conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle at Boston Enviro using the hashtag ConConHearing. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Could staff who are present please identify themselves?
Christopher Edwards with the Environment Department.
Great, thank you. I'll call the role. Commissioner Sullivan?
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Long?
Nick Long.
Commissioner Wilson?
Mike Wilson.
Did Commissioner Conan join us? No, okay. Commissioner Herbst?
Anne Hurst.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda tonight is notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one nine five eight, Boston file number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero four eight from the BSC Group on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the proposed construction of a multi-use trail and amenities along the Ponset River and Edgewater Drive between Osceola Street and Kennedy Playground located in Hyde Park and Matapan Resource Areas or bordering lands subject to flooding, twenty-five-foot riverfront area, twenty-five-foot waterfront area, one hundred-foot buffer to bank. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, commissioners. This is Scalo Lancing, project manager for the DCR, and I'm also joined by Diana Walden from BSC Group.
Okay, so where did we leave off? I think we still have orders of conditions to work through. I think Eleanor, and I apologize, Eleanor, it's not going to be able to make it tonight, so she's noted that the order of conditions have not been finalized. Is that right, Stella?
So we we sent over our red lines to Eleanor last week. And I I thought that was the next step was for the commission to review and agree or disagree with those red lines.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. She said that she did receive them. I mixed up hearings here and said they needed more work. When was the last time you heard from her?
She noted them received on Friday and in the afternoon, and I don't think we've we've heard anything since then.
Okay, okay. And if I remember correctly, we had, what issues did we have outstanding? I do remember we talked about the removal of the trees and talked about somehow maybe laying them down and preserving some habitat like a stumpery or something like that. That was a question that Commissioner Herbst had asked me to ask.
Right, and we agreed that we could do that, and so it was just the orders, making making sure that DCR can agree on some of the legal things in the orders.
Chair Parker, I'm just pulling it open. There's looks like a fair amount of redlining.
Yeah.
Most, a lot of them had to do with the stormwater best management practices because DCR has our own MS four permit under with the EPA. So there were some red lines with regards to that, and then also there were some orders that were not applicable with regards to restoration, wetland restoration areas which we were just asking, well, can these be eliminated since they're not applicable? And then there was the one about the snow removal plan which we redlined to be the same as was approved for the Napont River Greenway Project, Tanyan Beach, Marissa Boulevard. I guess we just deleted one sentence about the dates from April to before April to remove all snow from the site. Diana, I don't know if you can remember any of the other highlights?
Yeah, I believe there was one about the compensatory floodplain storage, and we hadn't proposed any, and we were just making sure that, I believe the condition is something like ensure that the storage area is built prior to the filling of any any floodplain, and so we just wanted to clarify that that wasn't applicable to us, since that wasn't something we had proposed in the notice of intent.
There was another one about construction within the body of water which we're not proposing at all.
Oh, right, right. There is having a boat. The contractor must have a boat to remove any trash that makes its way to the waterway and check the boom. And so we we noted, could we say, can they be responsible for removal of any trash that reaches the waterway versus having a boat in order to do so, things like that?
Okay, okay, so we're sort of at a disadvantage here because unfortunately Eleanor took sick this afternoon at like three o'clock, so this is a lot to go through tonight. Unfortunately, yeah, yeah, sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay, so one thing that I just want to check with Commissioner Herbst because she was not able to make last meeting, and I threw you her comment, and so I just want to give her a chance to address it herself. And that was about the removal of the trees and the invasives. So Commissioner Herbst, did you have anything to say on that?
Well, I wonder if my time has passed on that. I I had a, I was the one who had asked for an explanation of, you know, what you're taking out between twenty and thirty feet and twenty and forty feet, because it's a lot of tree removal, and I my recollection is, and other commissioners can certainly speak up, that in in recent filings where that's been true, and some of the reason for tree removal is they're invasives, we've ended up sort of landing on the side of, you know, don't remove a full, a fully grown tree for that reason, so it's I
So so if I may speak to your concern, Commissioner, because I agree that we shouldn't just remove a tree because it's invasive. If it's a it's a fully grown tree and it's providing shade and it has some function in the landscape. The thing that does concern me, though, is when we go to construction and we're going to be, you know, clearing for the trail, and we we keep so from center line out, we do a wide swath of clearing because when you start impacting critical root zones of large trees within ten feet of the tree trunk, you actually get a situation where a tree then gets to be in decline because when you cut or damaged tree roots that are greater inch in diameter, which is usually at the ten, you know, between ten feet from the tree trunk area, you might not notice the decline early on, it starts happening later on, and then the tree dies and becomes a hazard, and here I'm saying, well, let's be realistic about this. We're going to try and protect as many, much of the canopy as we can, but I would prefer to be a little bit more how can I say, intentional about where we plant trees to give them the best realistic possible chance of establishment and survival? Because anything within ten feet of the paved surface of the trail is, it would get damaged and also would later on potentially disrupt the paved surface and then get cut again and then get damaged, so the cycle just continues.
I guess I was, I hear that, and 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 maybe since it sounds like you're gonna have to come back anyway, you we could look at the analysis that you did, but I guess I was particularly interested. There's a the thirty to forty foot seems to me, is it? You have the ten-foot trail and then like a two-foot, you know, area on either side, but then you basically, I think we're protecting another eighteen feet. So
So I I I'm erring on, I'm saying, you know, ten feet off the paved surface, we have an eight-foot wide paved surface and ten feet on either side of that, so that gets you to the twenty-eight feet of the swath.
Yeah, I do have, I've been trying to do a little clip of a table that we have to put into the chat, but for some reason, it's not allowing me to put any sort of photo, it would only be text, and I can try to paste it there, but it's not staying in the columns. But I can at least say that, so we had done an actual, the analysis that we had in our slides, which I don't know if we want to flip to that particular page, if these are the same slides from last week, I don't know if we want to scroll forward there, and it's gonna be quite a few slides in, but we did have a tree analysis. Oh, sorry, one more back. I just saw it. I just saw it there.
The other thing, maybe I'll just suggest is that there are at least two commissioners better versed on these issues than I am, so I'm wondering if Commissioner Long or Commissioner Wilson have an opinion on this?
Yeah, let's go. Are you done? Because we can, I was gonna ask for Commissioner Wilson at this point.
And I'm sorry to interrupt. I was just gonna say that in addition to this, so the way we broke it down in our application was in the various zones from the river, but then upon Eleanor had asked for the analysis that Commissioner Herbst had asked for, and we did, we do have that, and so unfortunately I don't have it up on a slide, but I can at least say that so there's three categories that we looked at, the same that we have here. They could be dead or poor-conditioned trees, healthy but invasive, and then healthy and native, and so within the twelve-foot path and shoulders, within twelve feet, which includes the path and shoulders, we have thirty-three healthy but invasive trees that need to come down, and this analysis is all done on trees that are six inches DBH or greater, so it doesn't include smaller saplings. Then there is the twenty-foot wide swath, and so beyond, so it would be the twelve-foot to twenty-foot area is another seventeen healthy but invasives. And then in the area beyond twenty feet and but within project limits and and work zones, another twenty-eight trees that are healthy but invasive. And in that same outer zone, we have nine healthy natives and fifty-one dead or poor-conditioned trees in that that area beyond the twenty feet of construction swath.
Commissioner Wilson, did you have any comments on this?
Yeah, sorry, unfortunately, I missed the last hearing as well. But, yeah, I mean, I guess if we do have a little bit more time on it, I would appreciate sort of like being able to take another quick look at this now, understanding sort of the logic of sort of the offset and that sort of thing, because I was kind of taken aback by basically we're mowing right through middle of woodland stand, but understand that, you know, sort of the constraints don't necessarily allow everything to be saved there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Long, did you have anything?
No, I didn't really have anything else to add on this.
Okay. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, I had asked last time if they found any outfalls from the municipal system crossing underneath the path, and I think there's five or six of them, so I will independently get that over to DCR. We're just concerned if we happen to have a manhole that you don't inadvertently bury it or whatever, just make sure we can access it, or you're aware of it. But that'll be independent, so that's all I had.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, okay, so with that, we'll take a close look at the order conditions once Ellen is back in business here, and so I think that was it, so I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst? And I vote aye. So that carries five, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Bye-bye.
And next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one nine five six, and Boston file number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero four six from TRC Environmental Corporation on behalf of Pilot House Properties LLC for the proposed repairs to an existing seawall at Sergeant Swarf located at Sergeant Swarf North End, Boston. Resource areas are coastal beaches, coastal banks, rocky intertidal shores, lens subject to coastal storm flowage, twenty-five-foot waterfront, one hundred-foot buffer to coastal beaches, one hundred-foot buffer to coastal banks, and one hundred-foot buffer to rocky intertidal shores. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
One, Morgan Franco from TRC.
Great.
Julian Azalada, EOR for seawall repairs, SGH.
And I'm Olympia Baucher, counsel to Pilot House. If there's any legal questions, I'll hand it over to Morgan.
Okay, I do have a quick legal question on this, and I talked to Eleanor about it, and I don't know if she got in touch with you regarding who signed the application. It it lists, your NOI form lists William Epperson at the BPDA as a property owner, or the BPDA as a property owner, and the copy I saw, the BPDA didn't sign it as a property owner, sign your NOI. Has that been fixed, or is there a reason why they don't need to sign?
I didn't hear from the agent, but we did have BPDA sign. I'm not sure why your copy might not have had that signature. I know Morgan was in contact with the agent, maybe she can clarify that, but since the work is both on Pilot House and BPDA property, it is a joint filing between both entities.
Fantastic. Okay, and maybe it's because I didn't recognize William's signature. And I did note that, and I'm trying to call it up real quickly right now, I did note there were different signatures on the two forms. That's what threw me off a bit. So I think I know what happened now. One form has William's signature. You gave it to him maybe independently, and the other form does not because you have two owners. And they were separated in our files, so I think that was my confusion. Okay, so now I know how to recognize William's signature, and I think we're, so let's get to the substantive matter here.
Okay, awesome. So this is an existing granite block seawall in the north end. It's in need to repair. You can see the block in the corner that has fallen off. If you can go to the next slide, you can see the location a little better. There you go. So over there in the north end, as Olympia said, it spans over multiple properties owned by both BPDA and Pilot House Properties. You can go ahead to the next slide. There we go. Sorry, this is a little blurry. I have some other ones we can zoom in if needed, but it does span, so the property, it's only that bottom L is the work area, so it's not this full seawall, just that bottom L rectangle. And that spans over a coastal bank area. As you said, there is rocky intertidal areas nearby. They won't be affected, and the work is going to be planned in accordance with the tides to make sure nothing's affected. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Juliana to explain a little bit more of the logistics of the work.
Great, thank you. Juliana, you're muted.
Yeah, I just there you go. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share some drawings to just do.
Yeah, we unfortunately, if it wasn't submitted beforehand, you don't have the capability to share.
Okay, then
You should be able to go to the next slide. It has your plans.
Yeah, so these are some photos here. So as Morgan mentioned, there is the repairs that we're doing to the seawall are twofold. There is one missing stones at the corner that's starting to lead to some soil loss behind it, so we want to make sure that we are repairing that corner by replacing the stones in there for stability. And the rest of it really is maintenance, general maintenance on the seawall, the grout in between the stone joints is deteriorating. It needs to be replaced, and so the work in general is around that L shape, which includes the the face that you see on these two photographs. We're gonna go in and at every joint road, we're gonna remove any deteriorated grout, we're gonna re-chink, and we're gonna place new grout in there to make sure that we're providing stable support to all the stones. As mentioned before, we're, contractor is being required to coordinate or to schedule the the work around the tide so that there's no really work that's gonna be performed, at least with water getting to the wall. All the work is anticipated to be performed from the foundation level, the top of the wall foundation level. And also not included in our drawings, but part of the responsibility of the contractor is to provide some sedimentation, siltation, really, protection around the work since they're still going to be working with removing, like I said, deteriorated grout. There's probably gonna be some some fine materials that could get in the water, but that's the extent of it.
Okay. Is that it?
That's really the extent of the work. Yeah, these are just details as to how you're, the next slide, Morgan. If you can advance one slide? Yeah, these are just the details that we provided for the contractor on how to do the the repointing between the stones and on the stone replacement, but that's really the extent of the work that's gonna be performed.
Okay, okay. What is the plan to control debris that might fall into the water where you're doing the work?
For debris, there's, like I said, there's gonna be a boom with a steel curtain around just for for the sedimentation.
Okay, I'm sorry if you already said that. I was looking at your order of conditions. Okay. Okay, Commissioner Sullivan, do you have anything on this?
No, nothing at all.
Commissioner Long?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I don't either. Thanks.
Commissioner Herbst?
Nothing from me, thanks.
Okay, great. Looking at your order of conditions here quickly, as I had mentioned to the last applicant, we're at a bit of a disadvantage. Our conservation agent took ill this afternoon. And usually what we do is staff handles these comments. And it feels like there's a bit here, if you I mean, if you want to, some look at the some of these, we wouldn't be able to give up anyway. If you want to spend just a couple of minutes, in Olympia, you did the comments here, see if we can come to an agreement here, but if it's gonna take, it's gonna take more than a few minutes.
Do you want to eat now? Or you want to wait till you get home?
Pretty good.
Egg roll in a bowl?
Yeah, I have a, I have a few minutes. If it starts to get away from us, we can definitely continue, but I don't think these should be too cumbersome to go through.
Okay, so let's start with fifty-one, the erosion sediment control plan. I mean, that's pretty standard. That's not anything I think we've given up in the past. Fifty-two, what was your concern there?
Let me just pull this up really quick. So with the, let's see, fifty-one. I'm not seeing any comments on fifty-one or fifty-two.
I do. You know, this might even be an internal copy because your comments are confirm SGH can do this with the erosion sediment control plan. Is that possible?
Uh, let's see.
These might not be for our eyes, and I should stop looking at it?
You know, I think I think you're okay, and I think we have Juliana here who can
Put your phone on mute. What are you guys eating?
Okay. Christopher, there's someone that needs to be muted. Can you check around for that?
So yeah, I don't know, Juliana, you can address whether the contractor can provide that final erosion and sediment control plan for review and approval by the commission.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that would be something that we would request from the contractor. We can add, for example, the line for the steel curtain boom around the limits of work.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I think that that covers it. I don't think we need to change these. I think what you're saying is what we're looking for. Same with the construction materials and equipment staging plan. If that's not already in the file, we're definitely gonna want to see that. I mean, those are, those are standard. Fifty-six is highlighted but with no comment, and that has to do with that has to do with BWSC, and we're definitely not gonna get rid of that, especially with Commissioner Sullivan on the phone, on the call tonight. Fifty-seven, you're saying that you're not going to, yeah, you don't need a Niptys permit for this?
Correct. No Niptys permit is required for the work, and that's covered on page twenty-four of the NOI.
Yeah, got it. I mean, generally what I say with with conditions like this, if it doesn't apply to you, it's not applicable, but I think we could take that one out. That's pretty easy.
Okay, I think that's the the approach that we took. If it's not applicable, we just recommended it be deleted, but if the commission's approach is to just acknowledge that it's not applicable, that that will be fine with us as well.
Okay. I think okay, then your next question is, do you need to move the barges? I'm up to seventy-five. Need to move the barges if a flooding forecast is just from high tides? That's a good question. I don't know that. That's the first time that's been brought up. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any comment on that?
I don't. I'm sorry.
Yeah, usually we're talking about storms moving in. Not high tides. Okay, let's table that one for now.
Well, it, I mean, it says a forecasted flooding event, so that's not just a high tide, is that?
Right.
But is that also a concern? I don't have any, I don't show any red line or anything on this one.
Yeah, I think our recommended change was just that all land-based equipment be removed from the site, and I think that would cover any issues regarding the barge, if that's okay with the commission.
Yeah, I guess we'd be concerned, though, if there were unconsolidated materials on the barge in those a high tide. It feels like those materials could be swept into the into the water.
Okay, that that makes sense. I think what we're looking for is just ensuring that the barge itself doesn't need to move, but we absolutely understand that any any unconsolidated materials on the barge itself must be removed prior to any forecasted flooding event.
Yeah, and I think that's how we've approached it. Commissioner Wilson, I seem to remember you being involved in one of these discussions before with the barges. Do you remember anything about this? I think we just, we required him to get everything off the barge.
Yeah, that sounds familiar.
Yeah, okay, okay. So that gives you some clarity there. Next one, eighty-one. Delete if no excavation equipment will be used. Let's just treat that like we treated. If it's not applicable, it's not applicable to you. And then you're suggesting upon completion of project, cleaning of catch basins. Are there any catch basins on the property?
I don't believe so, but I think that's a question better answered by either Juliana or Morgan.
There are no catch basins.
Well, if there are any, so if there aren't any, it wouldn't apply, but if there are any, clearly we want, want you to take a look at them. So I think that one has to stay in eighty-two. So I think that one has to stay in eighty-two. We could take eighty-two out. You're not gonna have any permanent stormwater management features there. Oh, and then all the um. All the other conditions following it, eighty-three. I think we'd wanna hold on to just a few of these. For sure, um ninety-one and ninety-two. So I'm taking notes. I'll talk to um, I'll talk to Eleanor, and I think that's it.
Okay, uh my numbers aren't totally lining up with yours, so if. If it's possible, do you think um Morgan could touch base with Elena when she's feeling better to kind of make sure that we're. Understanding um.
Yep.
Kind of the modifications.
Yep, so why don't we do this? Why don't we continue this so that Morgan can talk to Eleanor when she gets back in the office, which I'm sure will be. Pretty quickly, and then uh next hearing, uh what we have left would be issuing the final order of conditions. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. Do you have a date for your next uh hearing?
Yeah, what is it? The twentieth today? I think it's October first Wednesday in October. So what is that, the fourth?
Excellent question.
Something like that, but it's in two weeks.
Okay, perfect. Um, I believe that works for us.
Okay. Is that all right with the rest of the commissioners? Anybody have any other comments? Okay, sounds good. Okay, with that, I'd entertain a motion to continue the hearing.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Great. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five, nothing. Okay, thank you. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for uh unassigned DEP file number. An unassigned Boston file number from Child's Engineering on behalf of the Boston Tea Party and Ships and Museum for the proposed. Welding of additional steel pipe sections to the top of the existing steel. Guide piles as well as temporarily installing a barge alongside the existing facilities located at three oh six Congress Street downtown. Um, resource areas land under ocean. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
This is Charlie Roberts from Child Engineering.
Anyone else, Charlie?
No, just myself, I believe.
Okay, floor is all yours.
Um, just a uh quick uh administrative thing. I believe we do have an NOI number now from Mastia DEP. It should be zero zero six dash one nine six zero.
Okay. I don't know how we get the Boston file number. But. Maybe we'll figure that out before the hearing's over. Okay, so what do you have?
Um, so if you go to the next. A couple of slides here, the next one. Obviously, this is uh down the four-point channel, Tea Party barge, uh from that, so next slide. Um, the barge supports the uh the Tea Party Museum from that, and they have two vessels uh either side as part of the museum exhibits. Um, they're kind of permanently mowed there. Um, as part of that, there's eight steel pipe guide piles that. The anchor, the existing uh floating dock uh next to the, the, the pier. Um, the goal here is to just increase the height of the guide files, just to get ahead of um. The uh increasing uh water levels and storms, you know, from that, uh they were just a little concerned that they were. Getting a little close at times, so just as uh some uh. Um, but for obvious reasons that have been discussed many times, um that we're just gonna increase the height, so looking at the next slide. Um, this is kind of a layout showing where those um those piles are located in. In gray, and on the corner, there's a float there. Um, as part of this work, um and we're also tying this in with the, with the celebration at the end of the year. Um, from that, they want to have the, the, the sides on the uh. Plan, plan south or to the bottom of the sheet. That vessel kind of out of the way uh as part of the celebrations for the, for anna- for the anniversary. Um, and so we're bringing a temporary barge to kind of be able to move the, the vessel out of the way. But I'll also hopefully if we can tie everything together with the contractor. Um, tie in with uh using that to stay out of the way, so they've got room to do the work on these piles as well, so kind of hoping to uh. Kill two birds with one stone. Um, that's why we just include with the location of the temporary barge. Um, hopefully that shouldn't be there for more than a cou- a couple of weeks um from that. Um, and the next slide is gonna show us the plan for, you know, we're just adding an extra five feet onto the top of the files to take us up to. Uh, twenty-six point five PCB um from that. Um, just a standard well, just to increase the height um from that. And that is really it.
That's it. Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have any questions. Commissioner Sullivan, what do you have?
Yeah, on the temporary barge, uh there are only two temporary piles holding that in. Are there more than two?
Um, I believe uh just two potentially four. They're just trying to. Source the barge right now or work with the contractor that's gonna bring that in there, but that'll be like the typical standard kind of put, split piles from that.
Yeah, all right. Uh, I just saw two on the plan. I didn't know. Sometimes people put typical two and then nineteen go in.
Hopefully not nineteen.
Okay, hopefully not. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Long?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Not here either.
Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
Okay, uh, just wanna remind uh members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff at e-mail at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle at Boston and Bureau and using the hashtag ConComHearing. Um, Charlie, I assume you're um fine with the order of conditions. I don't see any red lines in here.
Yeah, no, nothing that we would assume you would remove.
Okay. Um, I don't see any hands raised. Do you, Chris?
No, no hands, do you?
Okay, thank you. So with that, I would uh entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue the order of conditions.
Oh, we do have one hand.
Oh, okay. Here we go. Ms. Baxter?
Yes, hi. I just wanted to find out if we were discussing um a sprinkler pad at um.
Yeah, that's next.
Okay, okay. Thanks so much. I'm sorry to interrupt.
It'll be like two minutes. No, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so to entertain a motion to close the hearing uh and issue the order of conditions.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, great. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that uh carries five, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, okay, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for unassigned DEP file number and unassigned Boston file number. From Conaco Engineers and Scientists on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the. Proposed reconstruction of the Ponset River Reservation. The Ponset Landing to Spray Deck and replacement of walkways around the Spray Deck located at seventy-two Hilltop Street in Dorchester. Um, resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, Raul Silva, Deputy Chief Engineer for DCR, and I believe Kevin McQ is on the line from Conaco, our design consultant.
Great, okay. Who's, who's taking the lead?
Want me to go, Raul?
Yes.
Okay, thank you everyone again for the record, I'm Kevin McQ with Conoco Engineers and Scientists. Uh, thank you again. So this project is uh again obviously the pro- proposed redevelopment of the Ponset Landing Spray Park. So there isn't, we go to the next slide, if you don't mind. Um, there is an existing spray park out there. It's been there for a number of years. Um, DCR is looking to replace that. It's really, its time is up. Uh, if you take a look here, you can see there is an existing soft surface, which is an older version of the soft surfaces that have been done. And that DCR are doing placing in all of their spray decks. This one is, again, it's an older version. It's almost like a, a puzzle that goes together. And the, if you've had a chance to go out there, the, you'll see the individual pieces of that rubber spray deck are starting to raise and curl. So there's a number of tripping hazards throughout this um spray area. Uh, there's also issues with the spray features, so those are failing. Remember those don't work, and there's some leaking piping too. So it's really time for this to get upgraded and changed. It's in the, you know, failing condition. So uh DCR proposing to do again is to replace the, it's a full redevelopment spray deck that's out there. Um, new soft surface, it would be new um spray features. Um, replacing and improving the walkways, so it'll be a number of improvements to make it a much better facility. Um, one other issue out there too is that this is very well used, and so it is undersized. So the looking, DCR are looking to, you know, improve um the utilization of this. And also make it a little more, a more ADA compliant than it is currently. Um, so we have a bunch of notes here, and I've jumped around a little bit. But if you jump to the next slide, I can show you sort of what is being proposed, and this is the existing conditions plan. And it's kind of not really clear to see, but there's that circle sort of in the middle. That's the existing spray deck, and you'll see the walkways are sort of triangular shaped. So that's where the bulk of our work is gonna be done. The proposed new spray deck would still be in the same central location of what's out there now. Uh, that thick dashed line, that's the hundred-foot buffer off of riverfront, so we're outside of a hundred-foot buffer. We're also, all the work would be outside the AC EC. Um, so the only real resource area that this is located in is within, as mentioned, land subject to coastal storm flowage. If we can jump to the next one. If you get the next slide. There we go. So there's just an aerial, to give you a better idea, and again, you can see the triangular shaped walkways. Um, and the circle is the spray deck, so all the proposed work is essentially within that, that triangle, to be within the same approximate area. Um, so if you jump to the next slide, please. So this is what um we're proposing to do. So DCR looked at a number of options. Um, one alternative was no, not to do anything, but of course that wouldn't fix any of the problems that are out there. The, one of the other options was to essentially expand this, the spray deck, and you'll see within the gray area is what's proposed for the new spray deck. But one of the, one of the other options was to actually expand the spray deck and, and fill that entire triangle inside the walkway with a new spray deck. However, that didn't leave any grass areas or green areas um around the spray deck. So the third option, and what DCR are proposing to is go with this one, which is slightly smaller than using up the entire open area within the walkways. But um gives them an opportunity to provide some grass area. And also essentially doubles the size of the spray deck itself that's out there. Um, so what is included again would be uh new soft rubber surface. New spray features with more spray features than what you have out there now, new water supply piping, new controls. Uh, all the spray features would be low flow, so it'd be, you know, much more upgraded version than what you have out there now. Uh, the walkways themselves also, again, would be in the same location, but they'd be resurfaced. And because that area is really wide open, there's just one shade structure right now, DCR are looking to add uh two more shade structures out there also.
You gotta be fucking kidding me.
Okay, excuse me, um, could everyone who's not talking, um, please mute themselves? Thank you.
Uh, and do you wanna go to the next slide, please? So this is just a rendering of what it would look like when it's finished. Oh, I'm sorry. You go, you go back to the uh. Yes, thank you. So again, it would be, all the work would be within the same approximate location or where it is now. Um, staying within the triangular walkways, would be adding a couple of additional shade structures, but um. If you're gonna double the size, new surfacing, and just be a much more modern facility, uh more ADA compliant. Uh, and new piping, so it would be, you know, an improvement over what's out there now. And one thing I've mentioned before too is that this site itself um was a former junkyard, so it is an MCP site. So we're kind of limited on what we can do excavation wise. I think it's a four-foot limit of any excavations you can do, so, you know, we can't. Can't do any significant excavating out there, so of course none is proposed. Um, again, mentioning that, and, and with that, mentioning that this is in land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um, we did take a look at the um requirements, the city's requirements. And we are actually, the end of the project will be actually net cut, so we'd be providing additional storage than what's out there now. So the project itself, in our opinion, does meet all the performance standards for land subject to coastal storm flowage. Uh, I believe that's it. Oh, this is just the, going over the responses, um land subject to coastal storm flowage. So again, we are. The, the two main standards, just to address, these are the primary ones. Um, we do have a net cut, so we're actually increasing the storage capacity out there. And um. Performance standards number ten discusses issues with submerged water. Well, we're not building a structure, so nothing else that's being proposed would be damaged if this area were flooded. So it doesn't really cause any problem, the sea level rise or, or any flooding in the area. So I think that was the last slide.
That's it. Raul, anything to add to that?
Uh, I would just add a couple comments that maybe weren't so clear. Um, one of the. Um. Compelling. Attributes of that deck is the existing tree growth, so those mature trees all stay. There's no loss of any trees. We are adding one shade pavilion, and I think the balance that we came through of keeping. Um, that green space around the edge of the deck sort of speaks to our. New model of, some folks like sitting on the grass, so we did not wanna expand beyond what we felt was necessary. Uh, last item I'd add is, even though the deck is increasing in size, we do not anticipate any increase of water use. Our new spray decks um really have as many features that are water misters. Versus water spray features, so that's important to us, is try to maintain. Some level of water economy, and you know, for the kids that play, uh they don't seem to mind or even notice that it's a mister. Versus a spray feature, so it was important for us to maintain those, those attributes, particularly keeping those trees. As you know, natural shade element around the deck. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so a quick question on the uh MCP site issues. So you're excavate, are you? Um, are you excavating at all? You said you could, you can only excavate down the four feet, so I assume because it's capped. Um. Or are you gonna have any soils that'll need to be characterized and stockpiled?
Uh, no, because they have, there's a barrier that was installed above any remaining, you know, contaminated soils that are out there.
Is it geotextile?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and in the construction specification, it's, there, there's provisions in there, so if the contractor were to come in contact. With a geotextile, they have to stop work and there's a number of problems they have to face. But they're built to be well aware that, you know, this is a site no limited to the depths that they can dig.
Okay, okay. Um, okay, I'm gonna go to the commissioners. Um, it's, looks like we've got some uh comments in chat. Uh, and then we'll go to the public, but I just want to um let members of the public know that. Um, the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction uh is limited to um. Uh, evaluating the impacts to the resource area, which is land subject to coastal storm flowage here. So issues regarding um community meetings and butters meetings. Uh, and um, you know, sizing of the project. Um, should be directed to the mayor's office or to the building department, whoever issues the building permit here. That's um not our. Not within our jurisdiction, and there's nothing we can do about that. Um, Commissioner Sullivan, uh what do you have?
Yeah, I was a little confused. Uh, you're making it bigger, but you mentioned excavating a little lower. Uh, is that a foot lower, or what is, what is the depth you're going to?
Yeah, it, there, there is some minor grading because um right now, um, I'm trying to remember the directions. But coming from the parking lot to an existing spray deck, there is a, it's a slight downhill slope. And because we'll be expanding into that, there would be some cut along that end of the, of the walkway that's sort of adjacent to the parking lot. So it's, yeah, it's no more than a foot, that would be regressing.
Right, would that be a, along the entire area, or is that just in portions where you have the slope?
Just in portions with the slope, because we're actually tying in, if you look towards the. If you, if you look at the triangle that was up there, the, the short leg of the triangle.
Yep.
Going away from the Ponset River, we're actually tying into that. We're not changing the elevation of that walkway at all, so that stays.
All right, see, um, when the spray is working, et cetera. Where does it drain to? It drains obviously to some type of drain, and does that go to the, uh, DCR? Out to the river, or does that go to the sewer that runs to the property?
Yeah, that goes to the DCR O fault. And um, we've done this at a number of different locations, and so we've actually, you know, brought this appro- And um, we've done this at a number of different locations. And so we've actually, you know, brought this approach to both E P A and D E P. And they look at this as, you know, basically exclusion from their M S four permit. Because it's, they consider it to be clean water. So we have, um, I think in the notice of intent, we've included copies of emails back and forth we've had, and we're both D E P and E P A approved this approach.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that's where I went, because when it's not spring and it rains out, you've got to make sure that any drainage you do have there also goes to the. Storm drain, which, which it would, building it that way. But that's all I have.
So yeah, okay, thank you. Commissioner Long?
Thank you. Um, so I'm trying to coalesce a couple of things I'm seeing and um. My apologies, Raoul, but I think you mentioned something about tree removals and I noticed. Tree removals noted in the N O I and then some potential removals noted on the demolition plans. So Raoul, did you mention something about there being no trees removed or were you speaking to a certain area?
You do want to clarify that? Yeah, there are some smaller scrub like trees right along the edge of the spray deck. Those are being removed. Any of the larger trees aren't. And we actually, I think it's, they're proposing in the two or three times, the number of trees that are being removed are going to be replaced. In an area just off of the spray deck in. So there are some small trees along right on the edge of the spray deck that will be removed.
Do you have a number for trees removed, Kevin?
Uh. It's in the N O I, I apologize.
Yeah, you say five removals and um, I just, yeah, I'm, you know, on the demo plans, it says. Yeah, remove all existing trees within the limits of work as necessary.
Sorry, I think, yeah, I think it's five.
Okay.
They're really the small, I don't even know what types of trees they are.
And then how many are you planting? Or how many are being proposed to be planted?
More, it was more than five. I can't remember which one of the plans.
It was.
We're proposing more than a one to one.
Proposed was six uh, replacements for that.
And part of, Raoul, I don't speak for you on this, but I know um, back in the discussion we had in the past, there was a talk about having the D C R arborists too. Take a look at what types of trees we go and exact location where they've been installed.
Correct. So it's a, it's a good catch, Nick. We can clarify that the trees that we're saving, that we're retaining. Are the large mature trees providing existing shade. Those five are smaller. I think they're all, you know, less than two inches. They're sort of scrubbed. And they're being replicated with, as Kevin said, we're taking out five, replacing them with six. I think the six would be an appropriate species and maybe a slightly different location.
And you, you mentioned the D C R arborist potentially having input on that, or would, would it be the contractor choosing species?
It would be, it would be a D C R arborist that makes that final call. The tree uh, planting would be done by our contract.
All right, um, so I'm hearing, yeah, five of those smaller tree removals and then six proposed replanting. Um. And the arborist is the expert, uh, but hopefully they make sure they're salt tolerant. Um, this being in that coastal storm flowage area. And uh, all that good stuff, but that really, that really wraps up my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, Nick, thanks for sort of teeing off the tree discussion. Um, I guess my general sense was is that we're used to seeing plans that are a little further along for. This type of a scope of project that have sort of their narrative a little more straight about. Um, what's going on with tree removals versus replacements and their ratios? Cause while six is more than five, it's not a lot more than five and nowhere near double. And you know, I think also I'm a little confused as to where trees are being removed. And their size, it would seem a lot of the trees are being removed on the south side of the project, which is what's, would be providing shade. Um. So I don't, I don't think the drawings are there yet. Um, is my general comment and I would want to know what the species actually are. I would expect that out of D C R. To be leading with that as they did in an earlier presentation, as opposed to leaving that to the discretion of. Whatever's left on the truck at the end of the season. Um, I guess more concretely, what, what's the like paving material or what, what, what is the lining? All of this? In terms of the play surface?
What is the material of golden spray deck, if you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is, it's a resilient rubber material that D C R puts on all their spray decks.
And is that tested or somehow anchored in a way that inland subject to coastal storm flowage that that doesn't. Migrate up or become disconnected?
Yeah, that, that, I mean, it's meant to be underwater. It's meant, meant to be wet. Uh, it comes with a, you know, a type of glue that's used to hold it in place. So it gets, you know, basically play it, put on hot. And it gets rolled and spread. And then it, when it cools, it becomes, you see, you've seen in playgrounds, um, spray decks again. It's used in a number of different locations, but it's secured to, it's, it's a, a concrete base that gets put down first. And that material gets secured onto that base, so it doesn't move.
And it's not, it doesn't become buoyant if there is some sort of penetration. Okay, I guess I've seen playgrounds float away. That are made out of that.
Yeah, it, it's meant to be wet. So it's, that's what it's for.
Well, it doesn't mean it's, yeah, that's waterproof. That's different than something that's also waterproof and buoyant. So. Anyway, in any event, I, yeah, as I said earlier, um, the details are very general. The tree plan is not there. I would expect much more from landscaping. Um, I don't think this is ready for us to comment on yet.
Okay, thank you. So uh, follow up question to Commissioner Wilson's uh, questions. Um, as far as the materials for the pad, uh, not recycled tires, correct? Correct. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, uh, Commissioner Herbst?
Uh, thanks. I appreciate the comments of the previous commissioners on the tree issues and echo those. Um, I had an additional issue, which is that you uh, addressed land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um, particularly E, the performance standards. Um, and, and this has been a recurring issue. You're not the only applicant. But did not address F, which is redel- redevelopment within previously developed land subject to coastal storm flowage. Uh, and the, the key language there. Uh, is that um, at a minimum, proposed worker activity shall result in an improvement over existing conditions. Uh, in the capacity of the, of land subject to coastal. Uh, storm flowage to correct at least one of the resource areas values. I think you have things you could say about that, but you didn't address it in. It sounds like you need to come back to us. So I think I would look for that as well.
Okay. You said that was F?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so before we go to the public, um, another thing I want to explain, um, and Commissioner Herbst just previewed it. Um, this, this uh, matter is going to have to come back before us for a few reasons. One, we're asking for more information. Um, two, there has not been a D E P or Boston file number assigned to it. So we can't move anything along without the um. With numbers unassigned. So um, and uh, last thing is, I think Ms. Baxter brought up something about. Uh, the abutters um, weren't notified. We have in our files and it's um, auto-generated. Uh, by the city, a list of um, abutters within three hundred feet who weren't notified. If you feel like you live within three hundred feet and you weren't notified. Um, you feel free to call um, our agent. Uh, she should be back in the office in a few days uh, to um, verify whether you should have been. Whether you should have been notified or not, and uh, we can correct that situation. Um, so with that, we'll go to the public. And again, I would just ask anyone who is um, going to talk about the sizing of the project. Or um, the need for community meetings, that's um, not really our purview. Uh, and there's nothing we can do about that. I would uh, urge you, if you have those concerns, to call the mayor's office. Uh, your neighborhood liaison and you can find that online um, pretty easily. Um, so with that, uh, is there anybody who'd like to um, uh, make any verbal comments on this? Okay, I see Rosemary up first.
Okay, so I am a director butter of the park. I live right across the street. I was heavily involved in the original structure that's over there now, which is terrible. It's never worked properly from day one. It's been a nightmare. Um, I, I'm all for doing it over. I just think it should remain the same size, only better. Um, when I was involved in the original plans, we purposely had it pushed back to cut back on noise pollution. And those trees were planted specifically to help with the noise pollution as well. And if you go any bigger, those trees would be affected. They're beautiful trees. They just started. To get to the point where they would provide shade and they look beautiful. It, it would be a shame to have them cut down. But I just think it's a, a terrible idea to have it any bigger. It, it's, it's going to be a nightmare for us abutters and not fair.
Great, thank you. And we will be getting more information on the tree situation, which we'll have by the next hearing. Thank you. Um, next up is uh, Lauren.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Lauren was, I live two doors down from um, Michelle. And um, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. I, um, one question about the caliper. Um, of the new trees, you know, what, what the size will be. Um, and bring into light that if we're gaining and one new tree, so taking five, but there'll be six. Um, why do we need new um, shade structures if we have trees? To do that type of job of protect, of protecting us from the sun. And as Michelle said, trees help. The noise pollution come across the street. Um, in terms of the um, the rubberized surfacing. I know the city of Boston is getting into using different types of surfaces um, for material. Because there is a concern of burning of feet. I have three young children that I do bring over to the split slash bed when it's um, clean. Um, and um, so I would like to know about the type of materials going to, that's going to be used a little bit more. Um, I'm glad this is coming back before you as well, because um, I believe it does deserve a continuance. There's not been enough, um, I know you don't deal with the process here, but the D C R really should have come back to us. Um, they presented to the neighborhood three plans and didn't show us the final one that they were going to move forward with. And I think that's very um, unfortunate for the type of um, uh, department that they are. Um, so just those types of things, um, they did offer to come back to the neighborhood with, with um. With those updates in person, which we, they had the opportunity yesterday and they said they didn't have anybody available. Um, and the last piece is um, the, the flooding now. Um, the way that whatever drainage is going on, the, there, there is water that goes into the fields. And then the kids can't play soccer over there. Um, we don't want any of this to get any bigger. We like the size that it is now and I would really um, appreciate that, that is heard by the D C R. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, and I apologize, Representative Hunt uh, is, uh, has his hand raised. Um, as a um, courtesy to elected officials, I should have taken you first. Um, so. I apologize and um, you can unmute and we'll take you now.
Uh, thanks. And you know, would reiterate the uh, comments made, but also I, I was not uh, particularly. Um, noticed of, of this application or meeting. And uh, I know you don't want to hear about process on the D C R side, but it is their process to have a, a, a meeting. To hear from the community, to propose uh, three proposals and then to have. What uh, they have deemed as the um, you know, coalition of all of those ideas. And all that we had was one meeting of three proposals. Um, and it's, it speaks to the larger uh, erosion of public notice from. You know, the governor's office for the last five, six years and it's very disappointing. Uh, no offense to Raoul, you're a friend, but. You know, could have gotten a heads up, could have gotten a phone call, should have been a briefing. Uh, Senator Collins wasn't noticed, uh, and neither was Council Baker. And um. You know, as to the specifics of the project and the materials and things of that nature, I would argue to keep all of the mature trees. And uh, to replace any that come down uh, three to one. And also the conversation around the material um. Being meant to be, the, the flooring material being meant to be wet, uh, et cetera. D C R has a brand new playground at P J P that after um, fourteen months has, is pitted and hauled. Uh, the material that was used at the playground at Port Norfolk was meant to be wet. Meant to be next to the sea after being moved from the ocean and is pitted and is already um. Has a lot of spots after, you know, maybe a year. And in the, the city is moving forward the new material as well, but at Garvey, meant to be wet. Uh, meant to be in the sun and walked on and after one year is coming up. So I would like to explore. Uh, the various options on that as well. Um, as for the, the larger piece of the project and size and scope and. Other um. You know, community uses and things of that nature, I think they'll be addressed at a subsequent uh, D C R meeting. So that's a statement. A question would be. Uh, one for Raoul, you know, what's your process going forward on um, community outreach? And two, for the commissioner, um. Do they need to withdraw their proposal? Uh, and if so, what does that mean? Uh, and in a continuance, how much can they amend uh, in that piece? So thanks for that.
Sure. Um, I'll go ahead and take care of our process first. Um, no, uh, what we would do is continue the hearing at this point. For insufficient information. So we've given them a list of information that we feel uh, we need in order to make a decision on the process. Uh, so the project wouldn't be withdrawn. It's an iterative process. Uh, they could come back next time. Hopefully they will provide us with um, enough information for us to be able to make that um, determination. Uh, if they don't, uh, it's common to um, continue the hearing again. Until we get to a point where we can make a decision one way or the other.
And, and I could add, I could add Representative, the, the, I apologize, I'm out of town. I'm actually out of town today. I couldn't make your meeting. Last night, but be more than willing to attend the next meeting. Um, so I think to continue the, the, the hearing allows us to catch up on some of the missteps of our public process. It also allows us to clarify the um, the tree issue and our commitment to. You know, minimize any tree loss and we can be much more specific about the trees that we're retaining and what we're proposing to plant. I, I like your idea of a three to one. That's sort of been, you know, two to one to three to one. It really depends on the caliber of trees. But we'll be able to revise the drawings to show that level of, of uh, detail on the tree work. So. Um, and the public policy, obviously we could try to get caught up at the same time that we're revising these plans.
Okay, Rep, is that um, that answer your question?
Uh, not entirely, but thank you and we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Ted Herd.
Yes, I just have a question about when they first put in the sprinkler park the last time, um, you guys had some freezing issues. And um, we had an early frost, obviously, the last time they had done it. And I, you know, if they're going to be down four feet, if the, the lines can't go down four feet, how are you going to cover over frost? And I know you're going to say, look, we blow out the lines, but stuff always settles and it always cracks the line. So. I just want to know how you're going to handle that. Are you going to use an antifreeze system? If you're going to use an antifreeze system, is it going to be environmentally friendly?
Uh, it's, it's a good question, Mr. Herd. And I think the newly designed or basically it's new plumbing, new drainage. But our decks are designed to be winterized. We don't have the need in any of our decks to use any antifreeze. So um, we feel pretty confident that we'd be able to winterize. We blow out the lines. When we shut the decks down for the season, we do it again in November. And we've had a, a fair amount of, of experience in doing that. So obviously the design takes into account the limitations. On the line, the drain lines and the water lines. And it's designed to allow for a inefficient and conservative. You know, de-watering at the end of the season. But it's a good question. It's something that we're concerned with.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, uh, next is uh, Ms. Baxter.
Yes, hi, uh, good evening. I had a couple of questions. Um. The first question is, there is flooding existing in the park right now. So you're talking about adding another structure without mitigating the existing flooding issues presently. That seems strange to me. Next, I would say this. Next, I would say this, if you're thinking about adding another structure, increasing the size of something and not adding any more parking spots. And I would ask, what was, what was your public outreach? Mr. Silver, what what was it? To go to a community, to to go to a civic association meeting is not public outreach. The the Civic Association is one group in this neighborhood. This is a neighborhood where a lot of people live. And to suggest that just going before the Civic Association is taking care of your due diligence is not correct.
So with that, Ms. Baxter, I'd just say that this isn't the forum. Uh, I think we've talked about the um, process here. Uh, State Rep talked about it with Raul.
What if, what about the flooding?
Yeah, that's, yes, please, let me, let me finish. So Raul, uh, what about the flooding?
Yeah, I I don't have a real cohesive response on the flooding. It's a low-lying area. So we are only working or proposing to work on that spray deck. So the field and the greater um, parcel um, is a concern, and I hear your concern, but that's not part of this project. It's rela-, it's natural. There's no infrastructure in the field. Um, there are no drainage structures back there. I know we've had some significant flooding events across our city. Um, but that is outside the limits of the project. I appreciate the comment and we can certainly look at what can or cannot be done to help that situation. But it's not, it's outside the the boundaries of the project that we're talking about tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Beth Leary.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, I had concerns about the parking for expansion. There is no parking, but the parking lot is very small as it is. And um, when it gets crowded, all the parks pocket our neighborhood, blocking our driveways, you know, congesting the whole neighborhood. So my concern is to keep it the way it is now. Just don't expand it. Don't cut down any trees. Keep it the way it is. As far as notice, we haven't really noticed. We got a certified letter the other day. It didn't tell us when this meeting was gonna be gonna be held. The only reason why we we're on this is because our neighbors forwarded this meeting to us via text messages. Otherwise, we wouldn't know what's going on at all. So the notification was terrible.
Okay, and uh, we'll have the conservation agent check into that. Um, but you said you did get a notice, correct? But um, it didn't say anything about the meeting?
Didn't say anything about the meeting.
Okay, okay. We'll, we'll look into that. Appreciate that comment.
And it shouldn't be expanded. Should just keep it the way it is, put a new deck on there, and that'd be fine. Other than that, it shouldn't be expanded at all.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Um, Jamie Joyce.
Hello, uh, thanks for listening to us. Thank you, um, for taking the time to hear us out. I I mean, I, first of all, I echo a lot of the opposition that some of my neighbors have mentioned. But I was just curious, this might be a dumb question, for this is a DCR project, why do we have to be jolts of the mayor?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so um, the reason I said that was I assumed that there would be uh, permits that would be needed for this project from the city. So maybe I was looking at it as more of a traditional project where um, there would be a required and Butters meeting um, for the project itself. It sounds like this process is being um, now handled by your state rep as it is a state process. But I would still urge if you have public safety issues uh, or any concerns like that. Um, it's within the city of Boston, you could reach out to your city counselor um, as well as the um, as well as the mayor's office, your mayor's liaison.
Uh, will do. Um, and I just wanted to also say, I saw Lauren mentioned in the chat room. I I think there really is a concern about how close that is to the street and Hilltop Street over the past years has become a very, very busy cut-through street. And cars are speeding up and there really is no restrictions for people coming in and out of that park. You see balls flying out, left and right, kids chasing after balls. I think safety is a big thing that we have to look at uh, before we even, you know, go any further as well. Uh, again, I just wanna thank you for all your time. And I look forward to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, so I think we've got all the comments. Ms. Baxter, I know you're you're have your hand back up. But we have a full agenda tonight. Um, this is gonna be coming back before us um, for at least one more hearing. Uh, and it sounds like uh, there's gonna be some community meetings. So I just ask you to either put that comment in the chat or um, hold it for next time. Um, so with that, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing. I'm moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
May I vote? Aye, five to nothing. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Raul. Um, and uh, I think we gave you some direction for the uh, next hearing.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation from Four Point Associates Inc. On behalf of the trustees of the reservations to confirm the limit and regulatory status of the wetland resource areas located at Pier Three, Marginal Street in East Boston. Um, who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Hi there, um, I'm Eric Fraser. I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Right. Uh, anyone else or the floor is all yours?
Um, so, yes, we do have um, other colleagues here tonight. Um, I'm here to represent the trustees of Reservations. Um, my colleagues with me are Brian Cullen and Jamie Fay. Um, Nick Black with the trustees and Chris Bush with Masport, who is the property owner. As you have said, the trustees filed an abbreviated notice of resource area delineations to help us understand the wetland resource areas um, at the project site, which is adjacent to Pierce Park Two off of Marginal Street in East Boston. I'm not sure if I have control of the
No, you don't. Um, Chris.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just let you know when to hit next. Um, so as many of you may know, Pierce Park Three is a part of the boss, the trustees' Boston waterfront initiative. One waterfront, which acknowledges it is more critical than ever to create, preserve, and protect publicly accessible green spaces on Boston's harbor. Uh, the trustees evaluated potential sites for a project that aligns with four criteria, um, the ability to create destinations, um, support community needs, bring value to Boston's climate resiliency goals, and are financially feasible in both creation and long-term care. Based on these criteria, the trustees selected selected Pier Three um, as their first initiative. Uh, next, please. Um, the project team filed an expanded environmental notification form with NEPA on February twenty eighth for uh, the park design you see before you. Um, and we were scoped for a draft and final environmental impact report. Um, as part of our DEIR, we were asked to confirm the delineation of existing wetland resource areas at the project site so that we could conduct proper environmental analyses and support um, future permitting processes. Next. Um, seems to have an issue with the overview overview, but um, the project site is approximately four point seven acres bounded by Boston Harbor on the east, south, and west. And uh, the future Pier Park Two to the north, which is currently under construction. Um, Pier Three is approximately six hundred and fifty feet long by two hundred and fifty feet wide and made up of a decaying timber pier deck and underdeck. Um, so as you can see in the first photo on the upper left-hand corner, uh, the project site has a great view of downtown Boston. Uh, the top right and bottom left photo show the pier is dilapidated state and a look into the pier. And the bottom photo shows the granite block seawall with a concrete cap located along the pier land interface adjacent to Pierce Park Two. Next. So along the perimeter of Pier Three is a pile-supported concrete apron that varies in width up to twenty feet and consists of two different construction types of concrete deck. Um, a newer section on the northwest and an older section on the offshore and southeast. Um, the center of the project um, and the northern half of the pier has an earth-filled core, which we call the spit. Um, and that extends approximately two hundred and fifty feet offshore and approximately thirty feet wide at pier level with side slopes protected with riprap. Next. So we have identified four coastal wetland resource areas at the project site. Um, land subject coastal storm flowage, land under ocean, coastal bank, and fish run. We've also identified the coastal bank buffer zone, which is a hundred feet inland at the top of coastal bank. Um, these resource areas were delineated based on a topographic existing condition survey performed by NICH Engineering. Next. Um, so land subject coastal flowage is defined as the land subject to any inundation caused by coastal storms up to and including that caused by the hundred-year storm surge of record or storm of record, whichever is greater. Uh, land subject to coastal storm flowage here was determined by a FEMA flood insurance rate map, uh, which has designated the project site as both uh, Zone AE and Zone VE. Next. Uh, the photos here are to show that land subject coastal flowage at the project site includes this bit of land extending into the harbor and inland areas um, of Pierce Park Two adjacent to the seawall. Next. So Fish Run um, resource area is defined as areas within estuaries, ponds, streams, creeks, rivers, lakes, or coastal waters, which is a spawning or feeding ground for or passageway for anadromous or catamomous fish. And which has been identified by the Division of Marine Fisheries and has been mapped on the coastal atlas by the Office of Coastal Zone Management. Um, the Division of Marine Fisheries has identified Boston Harbor as an area that provides refugee and migratory habitat for rainbow smelt, American shad, and American eel. Next. So the photos here are just to show um, Boston Harbor and um, the fish run that has been identified on both sides of the pier and under the pier. Next. Um, land under ocean is defined as the land extending from the meanlow waterline seaward to the boundary of the municipality's jurisdiction and includes uh, land under estuaries. Um, the meanlow waterline at the project site is at elevation negative five point two feet, NAVD eighty-eight, which is based on a hydrographic survey conducted in twenty twenty-three and recent observations at the project site. Um, it runs along the base of the spit and along the vertical seawalls. Next. Um, the photos here are to show the areas defined as land under ocean, which is the majority of the outer pier limits past the spit and past the seawall. Next. Um, so coastal bank is defined as the seaward face or side of any elevated land form other than a coastal dune, which lies at the landward edge of a coastal beach, land subject to tidal action or other wetland. The approximate top of coastal bank is delineated based on the slopes from the existing condition survey. Um, the bottom of coastal bank is delineated as meanlow water, which lies at the landward edge of land under ocean. Um, the slopes along the shoreline were calculated by dividing the horizontal difference between the top and bottom of coastal bank by the vertical difference between those elevations. Um, the calculated slopes along the shoreline range from one to one to ten to one. Um, as the entire project site is within land subject coastal storm flowage. Uh, the coastal bank was noted at the point at which the slope of greater than ten to one breaks to the slope of less than ten to one. Um, and this is all based on the coastal bank delineation policy from MAS DEP's wetlands program policy. Next.
Erica, I'm sorry, is um, is that slope um, depicted with the um, uh, A, B, C, and D extent?
Um, so those were are just to show uh, on the next page, uh, there's sections um, just to better show the slopes.
Okay, okay. Got it. Thank you.
Yep. Um, so on the next slide, yeah. Um, so based on the the regulations um, and the resulting delineation, uh, the area of the project site between meanlow water and the top of the filled pier is considered coastal bank. Um, it lies at the landward edge of land under ocean, which is at the meanlow watermark and extends landward to the edge of the filled pier, which has a slope less than ten to one uh, according to site surveys and is considered top of coastal bank. Um, additionally, uh, this stable and filled area does not serve as a sediment source, um, but does have a role as a buffer to the landward portions of the site. Um, and as you can see here, um, these are our uh, delineations and our calculation of slope of coastal bank. Um, next. Um, so these photos here represent the seawall and this bit of land as a coastal bank. Um, and the photo on the right, you can see uh, pretty clearly the slope of land at the spit. Next. Um, the two photos here show the sediment at the site, uh, which consists of urban fill and does not serve as um, a sediment source. Uh, next. Um, finally, the coastal bank buffer zone extends a hundred feet inland from the top of coastal bank and overlaps with land subject coastal storm flowage. Uh, next. Um, so the buffer zones, the learning to land subject coastal storm flowage includes this bit of land extending into the harbor. Um, and the inland area of Pierce Park Two. Um, and then next, with that, um, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight and uh, look forward to our discussion.
Um, okay, okay. Um, I guess I was thinking your presentation, you were gonna talk about the coastal beach in the intertidal area. Um, I mean, we have that in the NOI. I think those are the questions that we're gonna have, but um, okay. So uh, why don't I go to Commissioner Sullivan first here?
Uh, where where are we on the, any of the MEEPER uh, information that you you did in February? Has that been resolved yet or?
So no, we are still working on our um, draft environmental impact report and part of um, doing so, we wanted to confirm the wetland resource areas so that in our environmental impact report, we can probably properly assess um, any wetland resource area impacts of the project.
Right. And all this, all this survey has been done by a licensed survey and and all your information is based on that survey by NICH, was it, you said?
Um, correct.
Okay. Um, no, I don't, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Long?
Uh, no, no questions for me. Thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Wilson?
Um, yeah, I guess I have two questions. One, and I'm sorry, my memory is lapsing on this one. But we did see some sort of AMRAD from a parcel that was over there sort of towards Clipper Ship. Um, and I don't know if it's been since redeveloped, but there was sort of a back and forth with um, between the consultants in terms of like when there was like urban fill and like you were mentioning and cobblestones and like sort of whether those were considered part of the coastal bank versus part of the beach. Um, that was just kind of, I was trying to hoping to find where we landed on that. But I guess where did you and NICH um, sort of draw that line? Cause I know sometimes it's murky and I don't know how much is present on your site.
Um, sure. So for us, we found um, based on the slopes of the area and honestly, um, my colleague Brian Cullen can probably speak more to the delineation here. So I'm actually gonna turn that question. To the delineation here, so I'm actually gonna turn that question to him.
Yeah, so, um, our project site was was bound, um, I guess your question to the. Um, Westerly bound was, um. To the section of pier close to, uh, Pierce Park Lane, um, and so. We had, um, used initiative survey that was certified, uh, as a. June thirtieth, twenty twenty three, which had delineated. The contours of mean low water. At, um, negative five point two and mean high water and at, um, four point three. Um, just to those extents. So. I'm not sure if that's exactly the area you're you're speaking to, but, um, we had used the. The survey, um, to those extents, um, and I'm not sure if that's close to that Clippership, um.
Yeah, sorry, you know, it wasn't so much as like, uh. I guess X Y delineation, uh, it was more of a like. The steepness of the slope and and interpreting that coastal bank. I might need to get back to you on this, I'm trying to find it on my phone, cause I know I took pictures of it and I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if, um, Commissioner Herbst was on that site visit.
Oh, my God, I, I, this Jamie Faye worked on. Uh, I'm not sure which that you, maybe you're talking about Hodge Boiler Works, um.
Yes, Boiler Works, that's it, yeah, October twenty seventeen, I just found it, yeah, sorry.
You're good, man, you're good.
I'm, I'm slow, so, sorry, I got there eventually.
That's, that's, uh, um. The, the shoreline there is really very different, I mean, yes, we, we did, we did have a rip rap slope, if you remember. Um, that came down, that was holding back, you know, urban fill. But there's also a section of that site that was really very sandy and flat. And clearly was beach in nature, and so I think the issue is trying to define where the boundary between those two are and and you do it really by slope, so. I mean, what Brian's analysis found is that there isn't any flat area. On this site that would be defined as beach, I mean, often you find, in fact, I think earlier tonight you saw a section of beach. At, um, those are the pile of house, it starts to swarf, right? Seaward of a sea wall where the sea wall drops down and then you have some flats, tidal flats in there, clearly beach, right? So we, we just don't have that situation here based on slope, all the slopes are actually fairly steep. By wetland standards.
Okay, all right, well, that, yeah, that makes the delineation a lot easier than.
Yeah.
The other question I had was, Jamie, you may be the right person for this as well. Is I remember Clipper Ship had done sort of a delineation with some of the existing sea wall that was there and stuff. And tried to tie into that for its sort of renaturalized wetlands and stuff like that, and some of them. I don't totally know why in the sort of first round they didn't take. I don't know if that was sort of there was. You know, sort, but I guess that would be just one. Thing in terms of like, you know, that these are not necessarily, I guess, literal lines in the sand, but, um. You know, that these may need to be resurveyed or re, you know, we may need to reassess them when it comes time for construction or something like that, if they do. Do have a, you know, migrate laterally or vertically. Um, cause I think that might have happened as sort of what went in was built to what was no longer there, maybe.
Uh, much, I'm happy to have a longer, much longer conversation with you about Clippership and some of the lessons learned there, but. Uh, but I think at this point, we're, we're, we're just trying to define where the resource areas are today. And we have a lot more work to do to figure out what they should be in the future and how we rebuild them and restore them, so a lot, lot of work to come.
Yeah, just, I guess, as long as the project isn't trying to tie into these, you know, sort of delineated lines as opposed to what winds up, you know, being there. Um, I think that was my main concern, but thank you for jogging my very memory in a very specific direction and appreciated the clarity of the presentation as well. Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you, uh, Commissioner Herbst.
Uh, just a question about, um. The finding that the bank is not a, a source, um. Which surprises me a little bit, looking at the size of some of the material and the fact that it's all V zone, so I was just. Hoping you could speak to that.
Let me, let me try, um, it is, it is, in a way, it's kind of surprising, but. Um, the, the history, right, of this particular pier is that it's been there for over a century. And you don't often see just. Fill. That doesn't move for a century, but that's in fact the situation we have here, um. We went back, the original survey that we had used. When we started on this project was from like nineteen eighty or something like that, you know. Forty years ago, right, and. Nitch, we had niche updated just earlier this year, um, but this is basically zero change. And, um. You know, it's just whatever the dynamics are of that particular part of the harbor, it's, it's not, it isn't eroding. It's very stable, it's, it's as stable as the rip rap sea walls nearby, it's kind of crazy, but it's the way it is.
Is it, um? Is the wave action, if you know, and now I'm just curious, not, not what you would expect there from a V zone?
Yeah, well, you know, it's a V zone, but we, we rarely, I mean. We, we rarely have those kind of waves in Boston, I mean, it's mapped as a V zone, but we don't get. Three foot, four foot, five foot waves typically in Boston, in the inner harbor, right, I mean, can it happen? Yes, it could happen. It didn't happen and the storm of seventy eight, it didn't happen and Gloria didn't have, I mean, all the big storms we've had. Have not generated those kind of waves within the inner harbor, but it could happen, so it's mapped as a V zone. And the other sort of issue there is this is a very dense set of piles that supported this pier. Uh, thousands of wood piles, so that, that has some. You know, I think some benefit in terms of reducing wave action as well.
That's interesting, do you, do you expect those will stay? Oh, for the long haul, I mean.
We're, we're working on it, I, I think. Hopefully some of them are gonna stay and some of them are gonna go, but.
So it could change dynamics there.
It could, yeah, it could.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's it. Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Uh, Chris, do you? Okay, okay, so again, thank you for the presentation, that was very clear. Um, so with that, I would entertain a motion to. Uh, adopt the, uh, resource area delineation, uh, issuing a, um, order of resource area delineation.
I'm moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst.
Aye.
And I vote aye, great, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you all, I really appreciate your time and John, it's always nice to see you, man. Take care.
Oh, always nice to be seen. Whatever.
Good luck with everything, can't wait to visit. Okay, next item on the agenda, actually, um. Yep, okay, request for a determination of applicability from Time Bond on behalf of. Uh, the Boston Gas Company for the proposed replacement of an existing gas mains or existing gas mains. Located on Columbia Road, South Boston, this was continued from the September sixth, twenty twenty three hearing. Um, Commissioner Long, you may remember that, um, I know Commissioner Sullivan does. So I don't think, um, Julia, are you here tonight?
Hi, yes, Julian Avatney here from Time Bond, um, also joining me this evening is Peter Nagle and Jamie Walker, both from National Grid.
Great, thank you, okay, um, I don't think we need to go over anything, um, Commissioner Sullivan, um, what do you have on this?
Well, I had asked, uh, Eleanor to send, uh, two items to see if they could respond to them, one was, uh, their. Their comments that it was a two foot wide trench and to figure out what area would be disturbed, if the details. Showed me a three foot wide trench, which obviously is significantly greater. Um, not that the world's gonna end because of it, but that was one. And also a table that was, uh, included in it, um, hopefully she sent it to you. Where you, you were telling us that this is relaying existing mains and to me you're laying. Are replacing with larger sized mains in a different location, so I think that's, and then abandoning your old infrastructure in the ground. So I thought it was a bit misleading the way it was presented and. So those, I, hopefully you got those from her. And you could respond to them.
Yes, thank you, um, I did receive your questions, um, and I guess I'll respond first to. Um, the, your first question about the trench width, um, so typically we, um, the typical trench. And utility, uh. Trench detail that we have in the, in the plans is two foot wide trench for this size gas main. Um, however, um, thank you for bringing that to our attention, um, there is a detail, uh, specific to the, um. This project, uh, we're now assuming, I think we're assuming a three foot wide, um, it, it's shown on the, the details there and there's a conflicting detail. Um, but I believe because of the, the work in light of the, uh, encroachment. Um, we will be assuming a three foot wide trench. In this area. Um, and then, second question, unless there's a follow up with that.
No, no, just so that you would correct the amount of area disturbed, that, that's all for the record.
Yes, thank you, um. And the second question about the, uh, relaying of the pipe, um, typically what happens is, um, National Grid. Um, lays down a, a new replacement main and then. Um, depending on the project, but it's typical that that pipe is, the old pipe is then purged and abandoned in place, um, and that is what's, uh, going to happen here. Um, I apologize if it was misleading in the presentation of it, but, um. There will be, the old pipe will, will remain in place but be abandoned, uh, from use.
Yeah, yeah, Julie, it wa- it wasn't you, it was the way National Grid tells everyone, I relay the pipes for what they really means, I'm putting it somewhere else. And I'm gonna abandon my own, so that was just me reacting to what we talked with National Grid on a daily basis. Uh, in the city, so that's all. That's all it was, so yeah, that, that's fine, that, those answers my questions, that's what I had sent to her and, and that's more than adequate.
Right.
Okay, um, and I did want to, um, also mention regarding the pipe diameter size, um, I did receive some information about. The nature of the increase in the diameter, so existing mains are, um, either cast iron or coated steel, um, or similar. And the new mains are going to be plastic pipes and the reason why the increase, um, in diameter of two inches is because. The plastic pipe actually has a smaller inner diameter than the, the metal, uh, pipe material, so. It will be the same capacity, um, the increase in two inches is just to account for the difference in the inner diameter size. Um, of the cast iron or metal versus the plastic, so the capacity is actually just staying the same, um, but. To account for the, the different sizes, uh, and diameter has to increase to remain the same, um. I know that was kind of a question that came up last, last time, and I don't think the commissioners that were. Asking about it are actually here tonight, but, um. There's also another item, I just wanted to close out, um, at least for. To satisfy people's curiosity and also for maybe future projects, um. National Grid is working and has set forth a plan to, um. Transition to non fossil fuel forms of energy. Um, and I have Peter Nagle on here, um, tonight, if, if he wants to talk more about that if there are questions, but, um. I know National Grid has spoken with the city already and has published this, um, document about fossil free. Uh, vision for their, uh, their utility services, so.
It, it would be, so thank you very much, because I know that, um, what you've answered, uh, recurring questions, uh, that you get asked at every single one of these. Um, I think it would be instructive for Mr. Nagle to just give us a two, three minute summary of the program.
Peter, are you, are you here still?
He abandoned you, no, he's there. There you go.
But we're not hearing him.
Yeah, this microphone doesn't seem to be working.
Yeah, it's. Just heard something. Uh, that's unfortunate, okay. Um, we might do that at another time, or if there's a statement, um, written statement that you want to send in, so have it on file. Um, that would make sense. Since microphone is not working, okay, um, I don't see any hands from the public, um. Actually, I didn't go up, go down all the commissioners, I apologize, uh, Commissioner Long, did you have anything?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, Wilson.
Um, I, I unfortunately missed the first round of the hearing, so I appreciate you explaining the. Sort of discrepancy in outer versus inner diameter, cause I think that'll solve a lot of our questions we've had for many times over. Um, the only bit I had was in terms of like transitioning from plastic pipe. Um, just in terms of like the saltwater tolerance and some of this is in land subject coastal storm flowage. Of the valves and stuff like, like the, you know, where, cause I'm assuming those are not plastic. And, um, how that sort of might work over the longer term.
Um, that's a good question, um, I, I don't necessarily have, um, an answer to that. Um, I don't know about the material of the valves, it might be specified in the plans. Um, but in general, I think, um, plastic is gonna be less susceptible to corrosion than the existing metal pipes. Um. But, um, I'm not entirely sure, um, about, about that.
We have another rep from National Grid on who might be able to, um.
Uh, yeah, um, Jamie Walker, I'm not sure, um, are you able to answer that, Jamie?
Yeah, unfortunately I'm not, I'm in the, uh, environmental, I'm a environmental representative for National Grid, so I think that would be. Uh, question more geared towards our engineering group, um, to see exactly what the materials are for the valves and. I'm sure they've considered, you know, corrosion and that kind of thing, but I, I'd have to ask, you know, if there's anything that's. Um, if the valves and those materi- those pieces are coated, um. Peter probably knows the answer, it's unfortunate we can't hear him, um. But it's certainly, uh, uh, we can get that information from our engineering group.
Yeah, no, it's just sort of a minor point, since I, I figured since we were solving many of our longstanding national gas questions that. Get to the valve one too, but yeah, it, it does appear there are plastic valves and. I mean, I'm not gonna specify that, cause I don't know what I'm talking about, but I was just curious, so thank you.
Great, thank you, and Jamie, you wouldn't have anything to say on the, um, uh, transition from fossil fuels, would you? Or?
No, I, uh, in my group, we don't, um. Deal with that too much, you know, we get kind of like alerts and we get kind of F Y I's, but, um. In terms of like the, the details, that's certainly something Peter would more have, um, his, you know, finger on, finger on.
Understood, okay, thank you, uh, Commissioner Herbst.
Uh, no questions.
Okay, so with that, I would, uh, enter, um, and I don't see any hands up, um. Still no hands up, so with that, I would entertain a motion to, uh, issue a negative determination of applicability with the standard erosion control conditions.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst.
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five nothing, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I should say, uh, before I get off, going back to your question, um, I know our engineering group said that if you. Even if you Google like fossil fuel free vision National Grid, you will find, um, announcements and, and some information that has come up and been published. Uh, for public information, um, so I just wanted to add that in too.
Fantastic, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, okay, um. Okay, before we go into our regular meeting, um, I just want to note that continued have been notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six one seven zero four in Boston. File number twenty twenty dash zero zero seven, uh, D E P file number zero zero six one seven seven two in Boston, file number twenty twenty one. Dash zero one zero, um. Okay, now we'll go into our regular meeting, uh, first item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for D E P file number zero zero six. One eight zero six from the Mass, from Mass Port or Massachusetts Port Authority for the reconstruction of the container yard landward at Berth's eleven and twelve at the Conley. Container Terminal located at twenty Farragut Road in South Boston, um, Eleanor isn't here, but she, um. Reported to me that she was able to, before she fell ill, she was able to make the, uh, site visit and, um. She, uh, if she was here, would recommend that we issue, uh, a certificate of compliance. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, so with that, I would, uh, entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for D E P file number zero zero six one eight zero six.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries five, nothing. Next item is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero, zero, six, one, eight, six, five. From the Muddy Water Initiative for the installation of two inch diameter anchors to the support, uh, proposed phosphorus reduction device on a support line. Located at four to eight Boylston Street, Endway Neighborhood. Um, Eleanor did report to me that, uh, she made the site visit. And everything seems to be in order. Any questions? Hey, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to, um. Issue a certificate of compliance for. DEP phone number zero, zero, six, one, eight, six, five.
So moved.
Second.
Good sec, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries five, nothing. Next item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP phone number zero, zero, six, one, seven, four, zero. From the Charleston Sprouts, Inc. For the renovation of an existing community garden located two, five, five Medford Street in Charleston. Um, that has not been resolved, so I would entertain a motion to continue that request.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
I have both, uh, aye as well. Uh, re- next item is request for a certificate of compliance from DEP file number for DEP file number zero, zero, six. One, seven, four, nine from Dorchester Yacht Club for the proposed seawall repairs located at one hundred Placestead Road in Dorchester. Eleanor did not, um, wasn't able to, um, provide an opinion on this. I think they still have some issues they're working through. So I would entertain a motion to continue, uh, this request.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
I hope vote aye. That carries five, nothing. Um, okay, next item on the agenda, uh, under administrative updates are the, um. Uh, and we were briefed on this, I think it was at the last hearing. Um, we have some, um, parcels, uh, that the city, um, the mayor's office of housing. Um, uh, want to transfer to the care, custody and control of the commission for conservation purposes. Over near the, uh, Matapan Urban Wild, uh, so, uh, Kat McCamless, uh, came and briefed us on that last hearing. Uh, and, uh, to prepare us for the vote this evening. Uh, so first I'll ask if any commissioners have any questions on this.
No questions.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, with that, I would, um, actually, I'll call it out because it's a little involved. Um, so, um, I'd like to make the motion that, uh, the commission. Accept the parcel transfer for the six properties located on Alabama and Colorado streets in Matapan. Uh, with the parcel identification numbers one, eight, zero, two, six, two, two, zero, zero, zero. One, eight, zero, two, six, one, five, zero, zero, zero. One, eight, zero, two, six, zero, six, zero, zero, zero. One, eight, zero, two, eight, two, eight, zero, zero, zero. One, eight, zero, two, eight, two, nine, zero, zero, zero and one, eight, zero, two, eight. Three, zero, 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 zero from the mayor's office of housing to the care and custody control. Boston Conservation Commission for Conservation Purposes. Do we have a second?
I actually have a question, Chair.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
You may not know the answer to this and I don't think it matters, um. So these are going to Conservation Commission jurisdiction, but the management is under Parks Department. So. I'm wondering if I don't, I see no conflict of interest, but I'm wondering if it's a cause for recusal in your eyes.
No.
Okay. Great.
No, I think it would be a cause for recusal if, um, we were voting to. Yeah, if, eh, eh, yeah, I, there's no cause for recusal. If we were like the Parks Commission. Yeah, transferred to the parks, then clearly I think that would be a conflict of interest for you, but in your role as a commissioner. Um, I don't believe that's a conflict of interest.
Okay.
You're going down with the ship with the rest of us, Nick.
Yeah. Okay, do you have a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Zero, zero, aye.
Okay. Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries five, nothing. I think that puts us up over ten acres when we've acquired over the last, uh, last few years, so. Congratulations. Uh, next item on the agenda is the acceptance of, um. The order of conditions for notice of, oh, I have to recuse myself for this, so I'll call it out and then I'll recuse myself. Um, uh, acceptance of the o- order of condition for notice of intent for DEP file number zero, zero, six, one, eight, two, zero. Boston file number two, zero, two, one, yeah, zero, four, five, and I've recused myself, so. Commissioner Herbst, do you want to do the, uh, orders?
Sure, uh, do I have a a motion to approve the order of conditions?
So moved.
Let's do it a second.
Second.
Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
And I vote aye, uh, so that passes four to zero.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, um, Eleanor was not able to get the, uh, meeting minutes, um, prepared for us. Uh, though the good news is, um, uh, we, they have been able to hire, um, a conservation, um, assistant. Conservation agent, so, uh, that person starts on Monday. Uh, so we should start to see some of this backlog get cleared up, um, so, um. I guess, uh, there is nothing else except, uh, motion to adjourn.
I have a question, um.
Sure.
All those acreage that's under conservation restriction. If in the future for climate change purposes, somebody needed to store excess storm water during. Any events.
Yeah.
That going to be prohibited or would that be something that might be allowed in the future?
Um, I wonder who would want to do that, um.
You're asking for a friend, right, John?
That certainly, that certainly seems, uh, well, I guess you'd have to look at the MOU, um. Regarding these parcels and what they're held for, um, it's a really good question. Um, because anything I've seen for conserve, that's been restricted for conservation use. Has not really, i- in in I think that it's an area where it's, um, I won't say tightly regulated, but it is, um. Tightly constrained by the actual governing documents, so if it doesn't say explicitly. You know, can be used for, you know, storage floodwaters. I'm not sure that, um, that would be a purpose, though, you know, and I'm just thinking out loud, which is always dangerous. But, um, since it's temporary storage, um. And it. I guess it would depend on the impact of, um, how it would hinder, um, the conservation use. So if the temporary storage was for like twenty-four hours or forty-eight hours, um. That seems like that might pass muster, because I don't think that would be material interference with the, um. Purpose of the conservation restriction. So, long way of saying, I don't know, um, but it's something to look into. It's a good question.
Yeah, so I, you know, not only looking at that area, every single parks department piece of property is, is in someone's. Uh, microscope, just what you know.
Or or crosshairs in in.
Yeah, that's, it's called life in the big city. No, it's just, we're looking, we, you know. As we look forward in the future, what are we going to do? Somebody's got to accept this temporary parking of floodwaters or else everyone's basement becomes. The next voluntary storage area.
Yeah, I think that's something we should, we should actually initiate, um, that or or elevate that question now. Because if there are documents that need to be changed to to reflect, um, you know, that type of condition, um. It would be better to be proactive, supposed to be reactive when it happens.
It it's like we look, we, whether we know it or not, the Rosendale Wetlands is. By virtue of our ability to block the pipe that takes the water away, a temporary storage for those purposes. Now, if we do it, did we just violate something? I don't know. So. Anyway, it's for just for thought, because we never want to end these meetings early, so I just thought I'd throw that out.
No, no, why would we do that? Okay.
What were you trying to show us, Nick?
Oh, um, quite see it. It's mirrored, but it's the Parks Department Green Stormwater Input Implementation Guide. So water steward must have, you know, worked on people with this, but it does prioritize. Um, areas which include some like natural floodable areas. So like Schuylund Woods, you know, Rosendale Wetlands must be on there, so it's a great thing I can share out.
But that that would be useful, because, you know, whether you know it or not, over at Hammurabi Park, we, uh, put a little gate and all. So we can take all the storm water that's coming down there and park it there temporarily, without you guys noticing, because we're only going to do it at night.
Right.
Uh, so. You know, I got the schemes, the schemes out there, so I'm just putting a beware, but I'm just curious about the actual restrictions when we have conservation. Purposes, I'm always confused what that means.
I think, yeah, my my only guess is that it would have to come along with those co-benefits.
Oh, yeah.
In wildlife habitat and whatnot, but yeah.
Well, that and some bucks to the parks department. I understand how it works.
Yeah.
Do we have any sort of like blue belt equivalent to like what New York has? Or there are designated areas for this as of yet?
No, you, so we, we have a great scheme for taking Bussy Brook and and Goldsmith Brook. And storing temporarily water in the Island Arboretum, but we had major pushback by the Island Arboretum. And then we said, but it's Boston Parks Department land, and then we get into that whole argument. Um, but at the end of the day, do we do damage to where people live and facilities we own? Or do we do temporary? And when I say temporary, I'm talking a day. Storage for the outlandish storms that might do a lot of harm. So that's, it's, we're just trying to get the conversation started and not ended by no, that's what we get right away, no, so.
Interesting. It's gonna, it's gonna keep coming up more and more.
Yeah, well, well, in fact, if we flood everybody out, it'll come up immediately, and that's why we want to have pre-made plans. For the George Wright Golf Course.
They'll wait a minute now. That's different.
It's probably.
Sorry, the tools. I'm sorry.
Having more of these areas, you know, accepting storm waters is good for the consent decree for the Charles River, I think as well, right?
Yeah. It takes care of the phosphorus. It it takes care of multiple cents, but it's just, I was just wondering about the conservation restriction issue. Is, does that just put another hindrance or if we made a little tiny wetlands in there that we constantly fed a little bit? And then had the ability to store a lot, like I've been looking at Scarborough Pond, not to tell you that, but that's what I'm looking at in Canterbury Brook. So, and if the gas company doesn't put a gas pipe to it, I'm a great guy.
It scares me, um, what would happen if we said no? You have a lot of tools at your disposal.
Yeah, have you ever heard of the word walk around? I'm really good at that, so I just throwing this out for everybody to think about, that's all.
Good one.
Fantastic. Thank you. Anything else?
I, I'm afraid I have a, just a small question. It looks like it came off the agenda maybe because Eleanor's not here, but it was the Hall Road Administrative Approval. I.
Yeah, I figured, um, she had mentioned it. I I, uh, figured it would be better for her to, um, talk about it, but did you have anything on it?
Well, I was curious what John thought. I I'm actually quite in favor of administrative approvals where we can do them, but I, but I felt like. I wasn't sure. I mean, in other paving places, we've made them make improvements and they say there's one storm drain, but it won't be affected. I don't know. I just thought, hmm, did, you know, was this place, maybe this wasn't the right one, so for administrative approval, but. I'm not at all sure, and if John doesn't think so, then I certainly am not going to lose sleep about it.
I'm trying to make her more powerful, that's all.
Yeah, cleaning up our agenda.
But that, that I'm in favor of.
Yeah, okay. Okay, great. Okay, um, so with that, uh, I guess by acclamation, we'll adjourn this evening.
Thank you.
Christopher, thank you for, uh, stepping in, uh, into duty, duty there. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Okay, everyone in a few weeks. Take care.
Alright, yeah.
Thanks.
Have a good night.